Meeting of Allgood City Council to order. Madam Recorder?
Honorable Mayor Fauci.
Present.
Honorable Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Honorable Councilman Dyer.
Present.
Honorable Councilwoman Norris.
Present.
Honorable Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Thank you.
And I'd like it noted that Mr. Dunaway and Jonathan are both out of town on vacation this week, so they won't be with us today. Chief Elder, if you will, ask you to lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance.
I'll stand.
Oh Lord, our heavenly Father, we thank thee for this beautiful fall day. Lord, may I ask you to continue to guide our path and our direction. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll consider approval of the agenda as presented.
Make a motion.
Second.
If there's a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Consider approval of the minutes the council meeting had held on September 11th, 2012.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Under new business, consider resolution 277-12 authorizing the City of Allgood to participate in the Tennessee Municipal League Risk Management Pool Driver Safety Grant. Chief Elder, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, this is a grant that's offered by TML. It's a 50/50 split grant. They'll be providing DVD players and televisions for training in our training rooms, and if we want to start some educational programs for the youth, we'll have the equipment to do it with.
Okay, I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number two, consider approval for the city to conduct a surplus sale on seized vehicles and surplus city vehicles within the next 90 days. This is you, Jim Eldridge?
Yes, we have currently now six seized vehicles from drugs revoked license and DUI. The state's awarded all those except for one. We're still waiting on the paperwork, and I respectfully ask the council tonight to give me the authority to hold a surplus sale.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
It's a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Consider approval for the city manager to sell surplus police vehicles to other municipalities prior to the surplus sale should they express an interest.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've had some phone calls from some police departments in the upper Cameron, Slane, and Livingston expressing interest in our cars. I've advised them that these cars are not in very good shape, but some of them believe that they can possibly get some and take parts from it to fix their cars. I've expressed back to them that I'd have to get authority from this board to sell that. We don't have to go through the procedure that we would have to do regularly on a regular sale. We can sell from one entity to the other. So I'm asking the council tonight respectfully to negotiate any prices of any departments that are interested in any of the police cars that we have tuck off the road.
I would move approval of that with the addition that we have the city attorney draft liability release. Anybody?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Number seven, city administrator's report. New business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we got reported to last night from Dan Sherpy. City Hall's going along very well. I've got some issues with insulation that Dan's gonna be sending me some information on in the next few days, but everything right now is on target with City Hall. I've met with Mr. Matthew Tucker last week on our projects. He is still working on the sidewalk projects and will be at the city council in November to give you a report along with Mr. Jones, Public Works Director. We've also went back to the Williams Circle project after the last several inches of rain that we got two or three Mondays ago and reevaluated that. Mr. Tucker's went in and done some tweaking on the main prints that we've had to try to straighten out that ditch in places where it wouldn't be so curvy that it would be able to take the water at a more easier flow. We went to all the homeowners that's involved in that, and they've agreed to do that. So we should be seeing some equipment move in at the end of the week, providing the weather holds up. We should get started on that. Also, the home improvement block grant that I think everyone's read in the paper from UCDD, Amy Peeler's heading that up. We've received that grant, and UCDD will be the primary agency that will be expediting that grant. Other than that, everything, all the department heads is running smooth. Our quilt festival went very well. Our Christmas parade will be coming up December the 6th at 6:00. Rain out date will be December the night. That'll be on a Sunday at 2:00, providing it rains. So we'll just say a little prayer and hope the good Lord will give us some good weather that night. Anything from the department heads? Ms. Larson, do you have anything?
I do not, Chief.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything? Far chief, Bill?
Oh, sir.
Mr. Lane, do you have anything? Brian Ford, counsel. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks, Chief. And no old business. So hearing of the citizens and/or delegations, anybody that'd like to speak, please step up to the microphone. And remember, you're gonna have to hold that microphone close to your mouth so we can get it recorded and everybody hear you closer than you think's comfortable.
Is it on? Okay.
Real close.
Like Star Search?
I promise, it's gotta be real close.
My name is Pam Villavozzo. I'm the spokesperson for the Citizens Action Committee, Allgood Citizens Action Committee. That's right, I drew the short straw on that, so that's why I'm here tonight. Before I get started, I wanted to say welcome to the new members. We didn't show up at the last meeting out of respect, 'cause that was, you know, your inauguration night and everything, so welcome. And I hope that you guys realize that it's not a block voting thing. The citizens really want you guys to vote individually and vote your conscience and your constituents. MTAAS, in which Allgood is a member and which specializes in public administration, has given its expert opinion on the breach of ethics issues presented by Ruby Hawkins three months ago. We presented these at the last work session. So my question tonight is, has a city attorney acting as the ethics officer given an official legal opinion on these matters?
You're welcome to speak. We're not gonna get into a debate up here tonight like we did at the last work session, so.
I'm just asking a simple question.
Yeah.
Has the attorney given...
He still has it under advisement.
After 30 days?
City government runs slow.
Well, when you do get it, can we get an official copy of it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Our intent here is not to harass anybody, but it is to see that the council operates inside of the charter. And all of these violations, all of these ethical things, well, I say all of these, but really, we're only concerned with two right now. Is Mr. Norris at this time receiving any payments from the City of Allgood while his spouse is a city sitting council member?
You have all those records, no ma'am?
What about through the fire department?
Is he receiving payment through the fire department?
Mm-hmm.
I suspect as a volunteer firefighter, he gets his reimbursement. Yes, ma'am.
And MTAAS has spoken to that and said that that's not something that should be going on?
I've not seen that addressed, no ma'am.
The paper, I know you stated on some of the things that they were citing that it wasn't applying to Allgood, but when we sent that in, it was asked specifically about Allgood. So the opinion they gave wasn't an opinion on another city or another state. Those were just examples.
Okay, once again, I'm not gonna debate in this forum. I'm not gonna debate you. You have my phone number. If you'd like to call, I'd be glad to talk to you. I'd be glad to sit down at your meetings, be glad to talk to you, any way you want to.
Our meetings are on the 2nd and the 4th of every month.
What we're not gonna do is run roughshod over a city council meeting. You're welcome to speak, and we wanna hear from you.
Okay.
But we're not gonna debate, you and I.
I'm trying to stay within the protocol that's set up here. I'm not trying to run roughshod over anyone.
That's not appropriate for him, so.
Okay. As you know, this has been brought up twice, so this is the last time that we're gonna be bringing it up. We do expect to have an answer on it. Whatever the answer is, we'll proceed from there with for some kind of remedy. As you know, the council's not, the committee's not a fan of the new extravagant city hall. What are the projected annual fees for keeping up the building? Utilities, maintenance, cleaning fees? Has anybody addressed that?
I'm not gonna, we're just not gonna do this point by point. If you've got something to say, you're welcome to say it.
Is there another way that I should be doing this?
Yes, ma'am, you have my cellphone number? You have my telephone number? So I think what you're trying to do, I think what the whole point of this is to try to, I don't know, embarrass the city council somehow, some way.
No, no, not at all, not at all. I have every respect for the city council.
We're using words like extravagant on a building that we had an open planning session, several open planning sessions. We published the plans, we've had, there were dozens of people up here during the entire process, and here's the deal, the cat's out of the bag.
Did everyone...
The building's planned, over a year's planning, and now six months of construction, so the cat's out of the bag.
Well, I know, we're not, we're just crying over spilt milk here, but we are trying to find out what exactly that the citizens are gonna be on the hook for as far as upkeep on it.
When that budget's...
Because we're not just talking about, you know, how much did it cost to build it? How much did the land cost? 'Cause we're into $4 million right there, but we're also talking...
When that budget's made, next year's budget, we'll publish that.
And the next matter is, this following questions are regarding performance of the city manager. We feel if incompetence is opening...
Let me just stop you, because again, we're not gonna do a question and answer. You and I, we're not gonna do that. So if you have a statement to make, let's do that, but we're not gonna do a question and answer session here.
I don't feel like that it's the right thing to do to contact the mayor on his private time for a public matter. This is a public matter. This is concerning the citizens of Allgood.
That's the way we do that. We contact our representatives, and we let our representatives conduct business.
And I'm contacting you here in the public forum.
Not gonna...
So, in other words, you're not gonna answer any questions that I ask, am I right?
I'm not gonna sit up here and be grilled, no ma'am. Not gonna do it. Love to sit down and talk to you, just like I told you a month ago, but I'm not gonna sit up here every council meeting I have and be grilled like I was grilled at the work session the other night.
I don't think anybody was grilling you, and I think you're taking this a little more personal than you really should be.
It is personal, because I care. It is personal.
Well, it's personal to the people that are on the committee also. They're also giving up their time to come here and, you know, and these forums that we passed out tonight were passed out...
Where have you been for two years?
Is there someplace written that I can't all of a sudden become involved in government? Is there a statute of limitations on how long I should live here before I can get involved or not get involved?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I, this is the forum that I'm supposed to be addressing these issues in, and you're telling me that you're not going to address these issues?
I'm telling you that we will address issues. I'm not gonna do a question and answer session with you every council meeting. So we've had a work session with one of these, and now we've got a council session with one of these, and I just don't think that's the good use of this. That's not what this board meeting, this is a board meeting.
And it was open for new business. It was open for citizens' concerns. These are concerns.
Comments, so I'm listening.
Okay.
So it's pressure concerns, and we'll listen, and we'll discuss them as a board, but we'll take them under advisement.
We're concerned over the education and qualif, let me, I'll just rephrase it that way.
Yeah, that's right.
We are concerned...
That's what I'm asking you to do.
Okay. If you'd been clear about that at the beginning, we could've saved a little bit of time.
I'm sorry.
We're concerned about the education level and the experience of the public administration. Does he have a public administration degree, or, you know, what level of education that qualifies him to be the city manager over a budget the size of the one we have in Allgood? And if he has any training, I'm sure he's the chief human resource officer. If there's been any training in the EEOC, ADA, age, sex discrimination, wage and hour and laws, so those are concerns of ours. We would like to find out if this training has been provided, and if there are any current lawsuits that are pending against the city for employment issues. But since I know you're not gonna answer that question, I'll just leave it like that, that we're concerned about it.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I'm doing pretty good now at getting the information out of the Freedom of Information Act and through the city.
Absolutely, I want you to have it.
So that's fine. This next issue was brought to us by the Church of Jesus Christ located at 108 West Washington. They sent a letter. I've got copies for everyone.
They've sent a letter to?
To this council.
I've not seen a letter from them.
I'm offering you the letter right now.
Oh, glad to look at it.
As you know, these are neighbors that are right behind your home.
Mm-hmm.
Their sidewalk is in terrible disrepair. We're wondering if there is any, due to some of the stops that they've been receiving by the police and the treatment they've been receiving by the police, which we are gonna follow up with a civil rights attorney on it, but we're wondering if there is some type of Hispanic discrimination that's going on underneath all this, or that they've been waiting so long. In closing, I guess that's all I have for you. On behalf of the Allgood taxpayers, I'd just like to say you're welcome. You know, when we go up there to pay our water bills and pay our city taxes, we're always concerned about the health and well-being of our city employees, so now that you guys have a fitness center, I'm sure that's gonna be something that's nice for you. You know, let us know if there's anything else we can do, like maybe weekly massages or a personal chef.
See, now you're being antagonistic.
Yeah, well, a little bit.
So you can say you're not, but you are.
A little bit. I'll add to that.
And I think the premise of this whole thing from the beginning's been like this.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close with that.
That's how we are where we are.
I'll close with that.
And I'm gonna make a couple of statements, 'cause I've read your meeting agenda over here.
Okay. Would you like me to respond, because I don't mind responding.
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay.
Unless you've got more concerns you'd like to bring, I'm gonna talk now.
Okay, go right ahead.
Are you finished?
Yep.
Okay. So addressing your entire agenda from, I guess, from tonight, first, I think it would be rash for us to make a change in a system that's working for us while the council has taken it under advisement. We pay an attorney, so, you know, I think a former council member, as she's leaving office, wrote MTAAS and asked for an opinion about a subject and didn't send it back to this council, as we've expressed before, but sent it back to the press. And the first that I heard from this entire inquisition here was when Laura called me and asked me to comment on it. So the objective was not to change anything, the objective was not to improve something, the objective was as an outgoing council member to be antagonistic to this current sitting council. That council member sat on this council for two years, voted for Jim Eldridge, was a full supporter as far as I knew until the election was over. So given that situation, it would be rash for us to make a decision while our council has this under consideration. That's my first point. So I'm not, we've not done anything rash since we've been here. We've not done anything rash or, you know, just all of a sudden since we've been here. We're very thoughtful and deliberate about things, so I'm not gonna do that rash either. If it comes out, his advice agrees with that, then we'll make a decision, we'll do something different. But until, until, while that's under advisement, we're not gonna do anything. We're waiting, and I think that's what the legal system would advise you to do. When your attorney's got something and the legal system's working its route, that's the way you do it. You just wait, and that's what we're doing, is we're just waiting. Secondly, there's been no increase in police department staffing since Chief Eldridge took over as city administrator. None, not one. As a matter of fact, we've reduced it by half because half is time's going over to administration. So you're saying you're using our police staffing as a evidence that he's got undue influence over the government, when in fact, he's not changing anything. And if you would use our crime statistics, which I think you'd find very promising, to govern or to evaluate how our police departments tend, I think you'd find that we've got a good police department. I think you would, formulas don't always fit, and I think you'll find that. If you'll measure police departments across the country, I think there's an average for a reason. There's a mean, there's an average for a reason. And what it means is an average, that means some communities are above it and some communities are below it. That's how we get an average. So I don't think we have to be average, and if that's what we're looking for around here, maybe I'm in the wrong spot. So secondly, the next thing is the block grant that you guys have put a public alert on here, that y'all are gonna work, y'all are suddenly gonna take this up and champion this cause, but this block grant was applied for by this council and administration two years running. Took a lot of hard work, it took door-to-door time knocking on the doors, saying, folks, how can we help you? Where can we help you? Identifying the problems and the needs and asking for this federal grant. So we are working for all the citizens. You say we're not working for all the citizens, we are. When we took office over here, there were, there were streetlights around the entire city except for over here by the ballpark in the historically black community. And the first thing we did when we took office is we put the streetlights out there because those folks need it too. So we are working for all the citizens. The other thing, your verbiage, I mean, you know, I guess we've all been to college here or several of us have, and we learn how verbiage can be inflammatory, and when you start looking at verbiage like a media room for training, you use that media room as a quotation like we're all sitting back in recliners watching big screen TVs. In fact, there is no media room in that entire, in that entire facility. What there is, is a multi-use city council room, and the city of Cookville has a city, has a city council room that never gets used except for those city council meeting nights. This council said, we're not gonna build that kind of square footage and then not use it for anything else. That's foolhardy. We built that kind of square footage, and we set it up with audiovisual so that we can do PowerPoint presentations through the council. If you as a citizen wanna come up and do, I did zoning appeals one time, brought a PowerPoint to the council to show them what I was building. That's there. The room also divides in half, so police departments and fire departments and our other public works folks can use that as a training room. And also, we've got, we've got folks in our police department that conduct state classes, state certification classes, and we make money doing that. That guy, he makes money for the city doing that, providing those classes, and those are facilities that can be used for that. So what we tried to be thoughtful with our multi-use, with not just having 1,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet sitting dead most of the time. We had space, we've designed space that we can use for multiple things. Now, the fitness room, we've addressed. Now, that's a big, a big thing. We're not building a YMCA up there. I think the fitness room is maybe 14 by 20, which by the time you get two or three guys in there and a few treadmills and some weights, it's gonna be full. But I think a fitness room, what it costs to build that square footage and equip that room, and you've said thank you, so that we can go to the country club up here, which is not what we're doing at all. That fitness room, we pay our employees health benefits, our employee insurance premiums are based on last year's claims. Are you aware of that?
No.
So if we, if we pay healthcare, and I think every company across the nation pays healthcare based on their claims, so if we have fewer claims, then our healthcare cost does not go up or does not go up significantly, and this year it actually went down. So that's a good thing. But I think anytime, I think, ma'am, the city has been providing that as a healthcare benefit for years and years and years, so I'm not gonna not pay our employees healthcare because there's a lot of other people around here that don't have the benefit. I'm sorry, it's a tough time, it is. But you can't be suggesting that we withdraw healthcare and put our folks in poverty because folks around us are in poverty. They're not getting rich working for the city, I promise you that.
No, I'm just suggesting.
They're not getting rich. So if we can, if we can provide something that encourages good health, if we can provide something that encourages good health, if we can prevent one heart attack, we can help reduce our insurance premiums, and I think it's money spent now for a long-term benefit, and I think it's a good thing. Now, here's the other thing. I asked you the other night when you were at our meeting, and it was pretty heated, what are you for? What are you for? And you didn't have that. We got a big list of what you're against, so what are you for? And so, well, I'm fixing to get there, so I, you know, I'm speaking and we're gonna get there. So we're for. Now we got it, we got a list of what you're for. We're for promoting policies and projects, like better relationship with city employees, and yet tonight you sit up here and suggested maybe we shouldn't pay for the healthcare insurance, suggested that we're building a Taj Mahal over here, suggesting that we can't provide them a treadmill and encourage physical fitness, and suggesting that maybe we ought to keep them in the impoverished level because other folks around are hurting too. Now, I understand that, so, and then, and then, and then we're attacking our police chief, city administrator, and we're attacking our police department and accuse them of racial profiling right up here in this public forum. So we're not...
And not that it's racially profaned, and my children have been racially...
So we're not working on promoting policies and better relationships, but fair treatment of all citizens, I think everybody up here is for that. Everybody here? For that? I won't, I promise you that I won't tolerate anything less than that. I promise you, I won't tolerate anything less than that. Councilmember adherents to city charter, and I believe we are, and I think we've got an attorney sits next to us that advises us on that. Public swimming pool, probably not for that, and if you look at around what public swimming pools cost municipalities, Cookville's getting rid of theirs, City of Smithville has been 10 years with just a money hole. I think that's probably not a good expense for the city to take on. But parks, historical downtown revitalization, lampposts lighting, new sidewalks, I think you've already seen this council address the sidewalks. We've addressed it, and we've got Matthew Tucker coming in the next council meeting with a full-scale survey of sidewalks in this city, so I think you're behind on that one. Handicapped accessibility, I think you're behind on that one. Train Depot, Train Depot, I think you're behind on that one. So most of these things, if you look at what, what we agree on, if you wanna get on the positive side as a committee and look at what we agree on and what we can work together, and we're not that far apart.
We feel...
But just simply because, simply because this board was elected by the citizens, by the citizens, and not so long ago we had an election, this board that sits at this table was elected by the citizens to represent them. You have entrusted us, you have set us to the point where you said, folks, Fauci, I trust you, go look at that and what you thinks best is what we'll try to do. What you and that board thinks best, that's what we'll try to do. This is not, when the framers of the United States set up the democracy, it wasn't a democracy, it was a representative, representative republic, which means I send my guy to Washington, my guy up there makes the decision. You sent us up here, we listen to what you've got to say, we talk about it, but sometimes we've got to come to the best answer. We can't always make everybody happy, and I promise you, I promise you, in the two years that I've been up here, I have come to learn that if I were standing on a street corner passing out $100 bills, there would be somebody that would fuss at me because I didn't have change. I promise you. I am not gonna make everybody here happy, but the things that I can promise you is that, that we're fair and that we have integrity and that we're honest, and I'm prayerful and I'm thoughtful when we're making these decisions. I think I've expressed that to you before. But I promise, here's what I'm gonna ask with your committee, 'cause it can be a good thing. So far, I don't think it has been, but it can be a good thing. If you will look at your goals and try to be for and not to be a divisive force, but if you'll try to be a force that works with this council, a force that takes a grassroots effort and says, hey, we'd like to have a park, and, and, and don't come up here and yell at me about a park, go raise some money, bring me some money, say I've got $50,000 gathered up here as the citizens, and we'd like to put that on a park. and we'd like to put that on a park, can we start from here?" I think that's a good thing. But I think if, if, if we're trying to do this job up here, and there's a hornet trying to sting us every time we turn around, and all we can do is slap hornets, it's gonna be difficult to look for it. So, so, so I'm gonna say, if, if you can work with us, and, and you don't think it's appropriate to call your, your representative, I'm not sure how that's supposed to work, 'cause that is how it works. We get phone calls all the time. Folks, and I'd like to talk to you about something, I'd like to ask you about something, here's what I'm thinking. What do you think? And then we have a heartfelt, honest, open conversation. That's how government's supposed to work. Government's not supposed to work, you save up enough spitballs to throw at us. If that's what we're gonna do. But this is gonna be the end of what you and I are doing at this council meeting, we're not ever gonna do it again. We're not gonna do a question and answer, I'm not on trial. And I'm not gonna be done it like that. Not gonna do it like that. But I will, sit down on my porch or yours, we'll talk about this. I'll sit down at the market and talk to your committee.
I know that you guys see yourselves as public servants, and you are. And we see ourselves as hometown patriots, and we are. We're just coming at this situation from two separate angles. We want to work with the city council. We want to be an asset to the city council. But until we get these ethical issues out of the way, that's gonna be in the forefront. And this is the last time that we're gonna be bringing them up with this council. Like I've said, there are legal avenues that we can pursue. After we receive the opinion of the city attorney, we'll take that into consideration. But that's what's blocking us right now from working with you. That's what the block is. You can't just say, "Yes, we have a..." That's the, the reason why, that, you know, you see yourself as a city servant, we see ourselves as patriots. Both of those things are right, but we can't get together on it. That's why we have rules like charters and constitutions.
And just because, just because you disagree with the way this board administers that constitution does not make this board wrong. And see, that's the difference. It, is that you're championing, and you're saying that you're certain that you're right, and I'm saying, "Let's see." So there's a whole difference, there's a chasm there, big difference.
If we're proven wrong, I'll come here myself and personally apologize.
Okay, well, you're gonna have to give us some time, you can't just keep hammering us. You're gonna have to give us some time.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry about that, if thirty days wasn't enough.
It's not enough. It's taken us two years to get a drainage project at Williams Circle. Two years. The, the government runs slowly. It runs slowly, nothing happens quickly. Two years.
Thank you all for your time.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
My name's Patricia King, and I am a citizen of All Good. And I would like to thank Jimmy Eldridge for his dedicated service to the citizens of this town. We, I have lived here twenty-five years or over. We went through chief of police like we went through dirty socks for years. We have a police department that the citizens can be proud of. I, you know, I, I stand back and I watch young kids walk up and shake these police officers' hands. I'd rather see them shake their hand than to see them jumping fences to avoid them. And that's what we have in Jimmy Eldridge. And I take it real personal, when a group of citizens say they're up here representing the people of this town, well, they're not representing all of us. I never asked for a swimming pool. To put a pool in All Good would be just like daydreaming. If we're gonna do anything, let's do something for the elderly people that is a big majority of the public here. We have more elderly that come here and retire than we do. And, and you don't see ninety-year-old people jumping off diving boards. Sorry, you don't. And it opens up liability to the city if someone drowns, we'd have to have more police officers to patrol. It's just ridiculous. I also wanna say that if I sat on that council for two years, I wouldn't go to a work session worried about whether Victor Jones was getting overtime pay when he's on salary for running a snowplow. It's just ridiculous. This council is doing everything they can for the, and, and if I'm not wrong, the city hall was thought of four years ago. The other council, the other mayor, the one that liked to sign checks and not know what she's signing.
Thank you, anybody?
I'm not good at making speeches, but everything was running smi, oh, my name's Rita Sardo. I live in All Good. And I love most everybody in here. They've been good to me. Now, I have a black son-in-law that lives in the black community over here. His dad Harvey Smith just died last, this January. He's a black man, I represent the black people tonight in here. They're not discriminated against, or discriminated, I can't say the word. They've been good over there, they've got sidewalks, they've got lights, so it's nothing to do personal to you folks here. And you guys have been doing a terrific job. And the only reason, and there's nothing wrong with you guys' education, it's some of the people that didn't get voted on that doesn't have an education that's mad because they didn't get voted on the council. It's people that's got revenge out here against you folks that wants to stir up the crap, like an old witch. And, and it was okay for Victor's brother to get out here in, in the cold weather, like Pat said, in the wintertime, cleaning our streets off, and nothing was said about his brother working for the city together. But now, since she didn't get on the council this year, that's where all this crap is coming from, just stirred right back in here with Pat Judd and everybody else that used to be on the council. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Anybody else? Listen, I got one more, oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nasty Dean. Most of you know me because I'm Patricia's daughter. And I really am good at speeches, I'm a public speaker at heart. I as well would like to...
Speaker councilperson, I hope.
Yeah, let's not push it. I as well would like to thank Jimmy Eldridge, and I think it was very disrespectful to question his education tonight. I think it was very disrespectful to question an elder tonight, because I was just raised in the South, and that's how we were raised. We didn't question someone's education, especially not when they were sitting on a public board and has been experienced like Mr. Eldridge has. As far as the fitness room goes, you say we should be giving them massages, get a pool. It'd be pretty cool, I'm not gonna lie, I'd like a pool, but I don't wanna pay for it. And since I own a home in the city of All Good and I pay taxes, I'm gonna say no to that one. But, the, the fitness room is a little bit different. Because you see, I know we have, how many firefighters? Twenty-six, thirty? Twenty firefighters. And I know from personal experience that running into a fire takes a lot of effort. You can't be unfit and do it. And I personally don't feel like I would want an unfit firefighter running into a burning building to save me. So if we can pay three hundred dollars for a treadmill, and my life gets saved, I'm all for that. I'll pay taxes for that. Or if we can pay three hundred dollars and a policeman just somehow edges out of getting shot, and his life gets saved, because he ran a little bit more on a treadmill, I'm all for that. I'll pay taxes for that. And as far as the new city hall goes, you say it's the Taj Mahal. Well, yeah, it's pretty nice, I'm not gonna lie, I like it. Glad I'm paying for it. Because these buildings that have been in the historical part of All Good have been here for a lot longer than I have been alive, for sure. Probably a lot longer than some of the councilmen have been alive. And the repair that we are putting into these buildings per year is probably ridiculous. Sure, I haven't looked at the numbers, I'm just guessing. But I'm sure the repair that we put into these buildings is going to save us and pay for the new building. The maintenance. Plus, there's no way that these fifty, sixty-year-old buildings can be safe. I believe we had issues four or five years ago, maybe, because of the records were kept in the attic. Now we will have a safe place to keep those records, and I'm all for that. If I have to pay a few extra cents on taxes to pay for that building, I'm all for that. If I have to pay a few extra cents so that our policemen and our firefighters can have a treadmill so that their lives aren't put in danger, I'm all for that. Because the policemen here and the firefighter here, in my personal opinion, which isn't worth much, exceed all other. Our crime rate is down. Why? Because Jimmy Eldridge is all, all obviously doing something right. If it wasn't, if he wasn't, the crime rate wouldn't be down. It would go up. The policemen here are respected, they are well-educated, they are well-trained. This isn't because they took a spur of the moment and decided to become a police officer, it's because of people like Jimmy Eldridge, who know how to work with them, who know how to groom a police department into something it is today. And that, to me, is something to be proud of. Now, you question Jimmy's ethics because he serves in two spots. Well, here's the deal. The councilman who has prompted this big debate sat on the council that elected him into office. She voted to put him in those two positions. If she had such a big ethical issue with it, why did she not raise her concerns then? If the people on this committee had an ethical issue with it, why not raise your concerns when he was put into the position? Why? Because you're a sore loser. And it's okay.
Please, let's, let's be respectful, please.
That was as respectful as I could think.
Please, 'cause I, I really, no matter which side you're on, don't wanna start back down to a divisive city. And that's why we have worked for two years to try to get away from it.
I apologize. The point I'm trying to make here is that they say they're the citizens committee of All Good. I'm a citizen, a tax, a tax-paying citizen. I pay fifteen hundred dollars in taxes a year, all right? I only make three a year, so it's half my salary. I would pay three a year if it means that our firefighters and our policemen aren't putting any more jeopardy. If it means they have a fitness room to help them protect us, to help them protect me, I'm okay with that. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Eldridge, thank you, Mr. Fauch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Nick Norris, Disabled United States Marine, lived in All Good seven years, talked to most all of you.
Thank you for your service.
The problem that I have, I, I've been to the committee meeting, I've been up here, I've talked to y'all about several things, all of you. I'm not here to point fingers and talk about a swimming pool or this or that, I do have questions. And these are things I've seen with my own eyes. I'm not, you know, gonna point fingers and say, "You done it, or you done it", with the new building that's coming up, or that's being built. That's good. My concern is what kind of continued education will be for the police department and the fire department? And I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, okay? That's not what I'm saying. I have seen a few things that do concern me as a citizen. And I, I would address that with any of y'all, if y'all would like to speak to me later. I'm not gonna just go right out and say them, because, you know, I don't want certain audience members to think I'm pointing fingers, 'cause that's not what I'm doing, I do have concerns about it. And I was wondering, you know, will there be continued education and training provided? Or how, how will that be handled?
How does the police continue education?
I mean, I mean, is, is there courses that they can continue to go to?
They're required every year.
But I'm, I know there's normal, you know, the normal course. Is there extra training and stuff that we could provide? Or if our taxes do go up for something, not a swimming pool, I don't care about a swimming pool, is, is there extra stuff that we can provide for them that would help our community instead of sitting here bickering about stupid stuff?
For the police department?
For the police department, the fire department, anything that makes...
Those guys are actively training all the time, I think you can...
I, I realize that, I'm, I'm not saying it's not. I'm saying, is there, is there stuff extra that we could do as citizens that would help y'all train? Or is there things we can provide for y'all that would make it easier to require, or to acquire the training, extra training? That's, that's my question. You know, like I say, I'm not, I don't care about a swimming pool. I do wish there was things we could do for the younger kids in the community and the elderly, yes. And that is something that, that should be looked into.
And I, and I will tell you, I can't tell you all about it, but I'll tell you, it's been looked into.
And, and I know it has, I've...
I mean, it is being, it's in...
Right, right.
In the process, we're looking, always evaluating opportunities.
This is just my concerns of, of what I have, and, you know, things that I have seen around, around our community. I'm not here for the pointing fingers, I think that's ridiculous. I agree with what you said earlier. Concerns should be brought up, there shouldn't be clapping, and whose side are you on, whose side are you not on? That's not what anything is provided for, for a community meeting. But like I said, I'm wondering about, you know, what, what it takes to help the police department and the fire department? And what can we do as citizens to help continue that?
And I, I think we have, right now, as, as well-equipped fire department as we've ever had, as well-trained a police and fire department as we've ever had. But if you've got ideas, not, I mean, ideas is what we're looking for. I've begged people to come to these city council meetings, begged. Every time I see five people show up, I say, "Man, thanks for coming to your council meeting, you know, come back." And, so if you've got ideas, be more than willing to listen. Love to talk to you. So give me a call, give one of these guys a call.
That's it. Appreciate you.
Anybody else like to address the council? Any council members like to say anything? Kurt, you have anything to say?
I believe you've covered it, Mr. Mayor.
You always got something to say, Kurt. All right, there being no further business before this council, I'll move adjournment.
Second.
I'll say. We stand adjourned.